When you say leftovers, you mean the...
The waste.
The waste?
Et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. The waste is, it might go to a couple facilities. One's in the Tri-Cities area and the other one maybe in Idaho.
Thank you.
We heard two conflicting statements. One from Jared that showed a picture where high levels of radiation were detected. And another one from Al...
He's coming.
Who said, "I didn't find any radiation," or at least that's essentially how I interpreted what Al said.
I'm sorry, could you start the first part of the question? I didn't quite hear that. Oh, what he was talking, the contamination statement?
Yes, he said, "Here's a picture of these buildings, and here's a whole bunch of dots around the buildings showing places that had measurements taken with high levels of radiation."
Right.
We've heard someone from the Navy, I think Chris, telling us that high levels of radiation were found in pipes inside cement, and so they haven't been removed yet, as well as places that had holes in the ground that people climbed into, I guess, to maintain those pipes that had high levels, and some and others that didn't. Your statement, Al, was, "I took measurements." Is it that you just didn't go to those places, or what can you tell us?
I did not go in the buildings. I was looking at publicly accessible areas. What Representative Paulette was referring to was contamination at ground level, which includes all types of contamination, all types of radiation. There's more than just gamma radiation involved when you're looking at contamination. And an instrument like this, or they used a better one than this, but this will detect alpha, beta, and gamma radiation, and that's what you see when you look at counts per minute. I was looking at gamma radiation at waste level for the public, where the public is, has more accessibility. But I will show you something. This is got, this is a little radium dial right here, and what I want you to notice is this. See, when you're actually looking at the gamma radiation, you don't have to get too far away before you're really not being exposed to it anymore. I hope nobody goes and sits on it like, like he suggests, but that's a totally different, it's like looking at apples and oranges. It's a totally different way to look at all the radioactivity that's in contamination and not just the gamma radiation.
I think, I don't know if that's more confusing or less confusing to you. If we showed that slide again, and the pictures are also up on the board from Heart of America Northwest. The slide I showed was the Navy's contractors' radiological survey data. You're talking about a background level in the 3,000 to 5,000 counts per minute and hotspots at 187,000 counts per minute. And when you do the conversion, you're talking about very significant levels of radiation in the soil. That's why we have to clean it up. The radiation levels in the soil are so significant that what the Navy says is their cutoff for what they will leave behind is, results in a dose rate based on their expectation of how someone is exposed to it. They're not sitting on it for a year, but their expectation of exposure of 15 millirem a year, that's equivalent to one and a half chest x-rays every year. And that dose for each of their radionuclides, which is different conversation now whether it's appropriate to add them instead of having one total. That dose alone is significant. We're talking about if you're exposed year after year to it in a public park, which is what we expect, starting from childhood, you're talking about a significant cancer risk level that based on the most recent National Research Council data translates to a childhood risk level that could be as high as one and a half percent additional excess cancers caused from exposure over lifetime. That's high. We think that the Navy's level of 15 millirem per year is too high for a public park for exposure.
So we're here in the year?
Well, I'm curious why the Navy is resistant to following this, the Washington State process of public disclosure and looking at different alternatives other than the one we selected.
I'm trying to think of how to answer that. It's not that we're resistant to following the state regulation. We actually are following the substantive requirements under the Model Toxic Control Act.
I'm just going to go with the requirements. Had several more steps and processes that the Navy has elected to not follow.
Well, I think there's been some misinformation about that. We are following the CIRCLA process where you do a remedial investigation, you do a feasibility study, you do a proposed plan, you do a record of decision, you do design, like as posted on the board out there. That's very, very similar to the Model Toxic Control Act. The writers of the Model Toxic Control Act, in my opinion, were very brilliant. They took what at that time was CIRCLA, and they took the best parts of CIRCLA and put it in the Model Toxic Control Act, and they're very, very similar. So when people say we're resistant to following the Model Toxic Control Act, I guess I'm not really sure what parts I think we're not following.
In one of the initial introductions, this statement was made that the Navy has not provided a study of cleanup alternatives, environmental impact statement, engineering evaluation, and cost analysis, or used to disclose the results of the contamination study. Perhaps my notes are wrong.
Yeah, I know that was from the first presenter. And certainly, I'm not a lawyer, but for example, an environmental impact statement is, CIRCLA is considered equivalent to that. The law itself, CIRCLA, is considered equivalent to NEPA, which, the National Environmental Protection Act, which requires an environmental impact statement. I don't believe the Model Toxic Control Act requires an environmental impact statement. Chingy?
It sure does. The state rules say that you have to do an environmental impact statement when you release your cleanup plan for the public to review. You've not done an engineering evaluation, cost assessment, or a feasibility study, or if you did, the records show that you abandoned it, you haven't produced it for us to review. And I think we should be seeing that. I have to tell you...
No, before you go on, the question was to me. I'd like to continue.
Well, let me just say something here, Cindy. I was shocked that you are, the Navy said tonight that it is going to proceed with the work before the comment period even ends. And in terms of process, I guess I'd like to have you explain that one to us. How the heck are we supposed to trust that you're following the process if you're proceeding with the work before the comment period ends?
So there's a question. You can correct it if you need.
I'm sorry, I'm supposed to answer the first question or the second question?
Can you answer your other question?
I'm confused.
All right.
It doesn't sound to me transparent.
Do you, do you need to repeat your question? Do you need to repeat your question? Okay, then we, so Representative Paulette, we had a, you spoke out of order, so we're going to go to the gentleman here, and then you'll be next, and we'll go here after that. So the gentleman in the green shirt there, thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard Ellison. My first question is, why isn't that the question period is not considered part of the public comment? Public comment period is separate, so everything you say, ask questions now, is not considered reviewed as part of the public comment. And I also want to know whether all these recordings are available online, so we can actually see the whole recording of it and learn the future from it.
Sounds like that question may be for me.
Another question, if you can't answer that question, another question for the panel, that is, what water quality testing is going on? There's a lot of information presented about certain error values of microcuries, microcuries of radiation, but what analysis has been done on soil and on water, groundwater, anything that's coming, leaking out of the sediments off the base, was formerly a base? Everything is so old, so long ago, that whatever's been done there, the technology has been de-downged, right? So why is the public doesn't know what's there? And hard that speed is water quality testing, it's a whole lot of, where did the water flow to down to drain 30, 50 years ago? Could it come out somewhere else? Is it by the unit somewhere else? So what water quality testing do we have going on right now? Where is it available to the public?
So would you like me to take part in that, or just...
Just do one, just do one.
My part, okay. Well, we had a couple questions. We did intent, we did quite a bit of analysis on the soil around the buildings. In fact, part of the removal action is remove part of those, that soil, and those surveys are available online. We also sampled along the storm drains and catch basins and sediments. We actually went out to Lake Washington where the outfall is. The outfall is where the water for the storm drains through the pipe go, exit into the lake. We sent divers to try to collect sediments out of that outfall during the remedial investigation.
The representative there goes, not presenting here tonight?
It is, it's all in the remedial investigation, but I have to continue that when we sent the divers out there, the material is so big, it's all gravel out there, that we couldn't collect a sample of the sediment. And that's why we know that the next phase, or the next thing we have to look at, is the near shore area in the lake. I mean, what, what is going on there? I mean, right now, we're just trying to deal with where we know there was contamination, where we know there's issues, as, in the most expedient way we can. There's a question, why, why are we going so fast? We, we started to realize that we had to. If we didn't, if we...
What is there, share with us now, what is the ground that you say, well, what is a little, you're just a little lousy worry about it, and then you're saying, what, you've got this huge meeting going on here because this is a major radioactive source you're concerned about. So you have a standard, you're trying to do the best thing you can do, and you show the data of what's going on, and I assume it was all, it's the best that can be communicated, so you don't even know what's there, and, and you won't share with us what we do.
Did you get a question out of that?
I think, I want to explain that the way we do the environmental cleanup, I mean, we, we go where we know something is, and then we go out until, we keep sampling out until we don't find it anymore. I mean, that's pretty typical way that we figure, because it's not possible to just go, okay, you know everything. We have to actually go out and sample for it. And we have shared all of that. I mean, it's on, in the remedial investigation, there's a copy here today. All the surveys are online. This, the, another hard copy of the document with the DVD with all the survey results are in the information repository. We're not trying to hide anything here. There's no reason for us to hide anything. We're just trying to go out and clean it up, and then we'll continue. When we're out there cleaning up, we'll also be taking samples so we can determine if there's more out there. What are the other things? I mean, one wonderful thing about doing this remedial action, we'll get even more information, so we'll even know if there's more impacts.
This is huge, you're on scene, so...
Okay, so, so we're going to give some other folks a chance to ask their questions, and if I remember correctly, we were going to Representative Paulette, then take here. Can I get that reversed?
Keep going.
All right, gentleman.
Yeah, my name is Richard, and the question I have is not CIRCLA, and the statement was made earlier that CIRCLA doesn't apply, because it's not a sort of cleanup site. It's a federal clause that the Navy seems to be under, and the Department of Health called CIRCLA, that would seem to apply. I mean, is that true, or is that not true?
Well, you know...
Is the Navy, and the Navy not, this federal process, even though legally it's not a title?
Before 1986, Department of Defense thought the same way you did. We thought that if it wasn't a national priority listed site, we didn't have to follow CIRCLA, we could follow another process. In 1986, Congress passed something called the Superfund Amendment Authorization Act, and it required Department of Defense to use CIRCLA, the CIRCLA process, and the National Contingency Plan for any contamination on federal facilities or from a vessel or a facility. And this is considered contamination from a facility since the contamination was created while the facility was an active naval base.
So what you're saying is that even though this facility is not owned by the federal government, the federal government wants to use CIRCLA to clean it up because it's contaminated by a federal department?
Right, it's our contamination.
So that's, it's legally entitled to the Department of Defense, is that...
That's right, thank you.
And CIRCLA does not require an environmental impact statement?
No, it's considered equivalent to environmental impact statement.
I'm sorry, I lost track. Those that want to speak, would you please raise your hand again? All right, we're going to go to the gentleman here, the lady there. I saw this gentleman, and I saw a lady there. Was it you, please? I'm having trouble keeping track of all this, so you got to help me now. All right, so the gentleman.
Hello, thank you, Richard, we live in Kentmore there here, my kids and grandkids all play and work here. I'm wondering if there may be some missing pipes, some missing material. I hear about storm drains, I've read about storm drains. We asked about what pipes we're following radiation in. We saw pipes that were cut off at the ground, but please recall, Metro and the hooked-in sewer lines are relatively new, considering my age. Long ago, Lake Washington was a sewer. I'm suspicious that in the day, when this contamination was provided, the sewer lines were where a lot of that contamination went, somewhere along the line of time. Those sewer lines were damaged. I'm suspicious that they may still be buried under the grounds, and the sludges therein may be highly contaminated after years and years of continuous additive contamination. Do you have ancient records that show early sewage outfalls into the lake?
The radium room pipe that I showed you on the drawing, that was connected to the storm drain line that runs out to Lake Washington, so it wasn't connected to the sewer. And you're right, I think a lot of the lines were, both water and sewer lines went to the lake originally. So when the, when Metro came in, all those lines were put to the sewer, but the old lines that weren't used anymore weren't connected.
So they're still at the ground?
Well, those are the ones that we found that were contaminated.
Are you sure that you know where they're all from?
They were still connected. So, you know, the one that went into the, into the floor that I showed you, that's still connected to the storm drain. So they didn't, they didn't disconnect that because they weren't using that pipe anymore, they just left it in the wall.
So the Navy left her in front of Metro?
And they hooked up, there's other new sewer pipes in the building to Metro.
And the main old pipes that went into the running, which is, you know, or through the lake?
Tell me it's about the videos.
Might still be there.
No, the, the one that went to the lake was the storm drain line.
So at one time, historically, storm drain and sewage were the same?
Yep.
You know that?
Based on what that radium room pipe goes to, yes.
May I continue with one more? This lady presented a very interesting question about where this material is going to go, and you said it's going to be some to Tri-Cities and perhaps some to Idaho. One thing we're going to be very interested in following, thank you, because Washington State and the federal government have a very long history of missing material. Tons and tons of contaminated waste that disappear. Two plus two equals three. Will there be manifests available for public review? Will there be inventory control that we can see? This is a very big issue, considering that so much contaminated waste in the state of Washington ends up being incorporated into fertilizers and composts. We need to follow it to the gram.
Everything we do under this program is open to the public, and it'll be posted in... Pardon?
Let me, let me just say, what you say is, is true in the past. Department of Transportation regulations for shipping anything radioactive are some of the most stringent regulations that are out there now, requiring extremely stringent placarding, surveys that are done, and inspections that take place, plus they're usually required to take one of just a few routes so that they're not lost. So the, the fact of any radioactive waste getting lost is not going to happen these days. I, I do some of the inspections on some of the DOT shipments.
Can I take that? Because it's, I'm, we're the property owner and we have control of the manifest, that we're using our EPA ID, ID waste generation number, and I can guarantee you, because I am the person that manages that program, that all of the waste will be tracked. We will get certificates of disposal or certificates of where it went for the waste, and we do have to file every year with Department of Ecology on that waste for as long as that waste exists. And we will, and because we're reporting to Department of Ecology, you certainly, it will certainly be public record.
All right, folks, we've got several more folks that have questions, and, and then we're going to move into the comment period time. So we're running up against that. I'm not trying to shut anybody down here, I just want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to do the thing they came to do here. So, well, let's, if you would, please try to make your questions clear, and if you can, concise to the best of your ability. And the comments, you can say whatever the heck you want during the time, it's allotted for that. And I just want to say now, I will repeat this later, but if we go beyond the nine o'clock quit time that we had for public comments, and, and we still have folks that want to talk, we'll stay here. I just want to make sure we get this thing, you know.
Okay, I don't know if you're current or not, but if, if this stuff went into the lake, it means that the whole lake is, it's radiant, right? And there's a lot of people swimming there, probably swimming there right now. I know I took, I swam there, I took my little kid there. My kid played in the playground, she went to Audubon camps, and they trudged through the, the property, Magnussen Park. And, you know, it's the summertime, a lot of people are out there, and, you know, are we being irradiated?
No. Well, the easy answer is no. There's, there's not that much material that was released that would cause the lake to become radioactive, if you will, or to result in, there to be exposures that are measurable at all. That's, that's just not going to happen. There's, there's not that, I mean, the material that's contaminating the site and possible pipelines and all that is fairly, I mean, it's concentrated, but there really isn't a huge quantity of it to where it's going to contaminate the lake like that.
But, Al, while the lake per se, which is huge, is not contaminated, if people are wading through the sediments, we don't know, and we need to test the sediments.
No, I, I agree with that. I, I want to make sure that we're, you know, I, I'm not saying a characterization of the sediments isn't required. I saw that as a broader statement about the lake itself. I do, I do agree...
They lay on sand, children are there.
Yeah, well, apparently there's no sand there. I'm not, I'm not familiar with, with the actual coastline there, but I understand it's not sand, but...
Madison Beach, is Sandy Beach there?
Yeah, that's on the other side, isn't it?
That's on the other side.
That's on the other side.
Swimming there, and they're walking, crushing logs.
Yeah, that, that's farther, that's not where the outfall is, so that wouldn't be an issue over on the other side of the park.
The outfall for Madison Beach is Thornton Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think all of these outfalls are in the north, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so any of the beaches that are away from that would...
I'm not sure, we heard the last remark.
You know, for people who have used that for years on end, and have, have spent a lot of time there, you know, in the outdoors, thinking that they were doing something to save. Another thing is, is that I'm one of the people who collect blackberries there, and freeze them for the winter and so forth, so we eat a lot of that. And, you know, I'm just wondering, how much that exposure, somebody, something I read had the, the radiation underneath the parking lot, which is right where the kids' playground is, where we spent a lot of time there with my little daughter, picnic, and the playground. The playground, I assume, is open right now for children to play.
Which playground are you referring to, ma'am?
Magnussen Park.
The one that's over by the brig?
Right, right east of the, the parking lot.
Yeah, over by the, over by the, what we call the brig, which is the, where the YMCA and all the children's programs?
That's the...
That's, yeah, you're out of the, that's out of the zone. That's not within the contamination zone.
Okay, and, and the three beaches are, and the walk around those, the water, is that in the contamination zone?
No.
The beaches that you referred to, Madison Beach, that area, no, that's far north.
No, Magnussen Beach is...
The Magnussen Beach, oh, the Magnussen Beach farther down, the Dog Park, the Dog Park, the beaches, those are not within the zone, no.
Okay, what about the Audubon, you know, where they, they go around, looking at species of this and that, the Audubon, the Audubon, is that you know?
Cheryl?
They're by the brig.
By the brig, okay.
So, sounds like out of the area?
Yeah, out of the area, it's out of the zone, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just think, if you exit the building here, and you go right and under the causeway, right? That's the area that we're talking about primarily, so where Sale Sandpoint is and the Hand Launch Beach, that's concerned, that we'd like tested. And then, if you look out behind the building this way, is where the other buildings in parking lots area and the grassy knoll is right behind us, right over there.
Thank you for clearing some of it up, I had a lot of questions. My question about the sediment, I wasn't quite clear what, why the divers couldn't get any sediment, what's going on out there?
The area was, was...
Pardon me, pardon me.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I cut her off a little bit. The zone that you're talking about down there, you have original sediments, which were during the time period, which would absorb the contamination, then you have over 50 years of sediment that goes on top of that, and then you have parks coming in on top of that, and we leveled thousand tons of gravel and rather large rocks into that zone so that we would have good areas for beach, et cetera, not knowing at the time. It wasn't, it wasn't trying to cover up radiation, we were trying to make a zone where we could, we could create our little marina down there. So when the Navy came in, and, and quite rightly, because I also had asked for it, wanted to go down and take a look at it, we found that, that it was buried too deep, and they couldn't get to it without having to come back with different equipment and go in and get it. And our plan is, as far as Seattle Parks is concerned, our plan is to, is to check it out until we, until we find nothing. That's always the plan.
Okay, good. And then we're going to go here, and here, and here, and did you, and if, if everyone else who hasn't had a question yet is finished, then we'll come back to you, sir.
Eight o'clock.
I'm sorry, it is eight o'clock. All right, so here's our quandary now. We have other people that want to make, ask questions, and this is our opportunity for questions and answers, and sometimes, along with the questions, there's a comment mixed in. And then, on the, on the agenda, we've designated this eight o'clock as starting our, our formal public comment for the record, and these questions would, and the remarks during the comment would all be published, and Court Reporter is here to make sure that everything is, is just exactly like it's said here, as best you can. So, this meeting is, it's your meeting, we want to, we want to make this work for you. So, what, how does this sound? I just want to see if this sounds right. I've got a ballpark number here, without going back and counting immediately, of about eight people who want to comment. And if you would, please raise your hand right now, so I can get a rough idea. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, so, yeah, less than eight people, and, which would mean that we would have a good, easy five minutes for everyone to speak, if we go another, say, 15 minutes for questions. Does that sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
How about we just go on the record, and people can ask questions, if they want to ask questions, they can comment if they want to comment, or on the record they will go.
All right, I proposed, I made a proposal, and I want to see hands of people that want to do what I just said.
Excuse me, I have one, if we're going to do that, I think the people that have their, that signed up to talk first is to go first.
Get to go first?
For here.
For the here.
Continue.
For the, okay.
If you can, sing the guy.
All right, you see, the, the thing is, what All right. You see, the thing is, what we do for the public comments is we record them. Now, you're right. If you've, if, so here's what I'd like to ask, is if you have signed up to make a comment, and you expected to start at eight o'clock, and you got here and you're the first one on the list, and you need to go, and it won't please you to, to let other questioners do this question and answer period before we start the public hearing, I'd like to see your hand.
She's a gentleman. She's after.
And I see one gentleman who, who wants to make his comment right now. So, and we said we were going to start at eight. So, so that is what we're going to do, folks. However, what we'll do is we'll stay here, and after the formal comments have completed, we'll continue the question and answer period as long as you wish to, and everybody still keep their eyes open, all right? Does that sound good? I'd like to see hands for all that think that is the way we should proceed here. Okay, good. That's what we're going to do.
I think we're going to do, we're starting at eight, five, four, three, two, one.
All right. Let the record show, this hearing is starting at, by my watch, eight minutes after eight o'clock PM on July 18th, 2013, at the Mountaineers Headquarters Building, 7700 Sandpoint Way Northeast, Seattle, Washington, 98115. I'm Douglas Palencia, hearings officer for tonight's public hearing on cleanup plans for low-level radiological contamination at the Warren G. Magnuson Park in Seattle, the former site for operations of Naval Station Puget Sound. Thank you again for participating. Notice of this hearing was published in Seattle Times on July 12th, 2013. Notices of this public meeting and hearing were also mailed to over 19,000 residents within an approximate two-mile radius of the former naval station here at Magnuson Park. And notice was posted to the public involvement calendar on the Department of Ecology's public website. A dedicated webpage is available at the address in the fact sheet at the front table. I have two main responsibilities for tonight's hearing. First, I need to make sure everyone who wants to has the opportunity to come up and comment. Second, so that everyone can hear what is said. And to get a clear record of the hearing, we have microphones and use a court reporter, so no extra noise, please, during the commenter's remarks. Staff may also take notes. I'll call those who signed in to speak by name in the order they signed up, and the next person to follow so they can be ready as their turn comes up. If you want to skip your turn until everyone else has spoken, just say so, and I will call you when we've gone through the list. Anyone else who has decided to comment may also do so then. Commenters, please come to this podium where we can record them, and so that we can all hear. Please try to summarize lengthy or repetitive comments. Again, written comments have the same weight, so you can just send them to Chink P. Wang if you wish. All comments will be sent to Toxic Cleanup Program staff for response. Again, the address and contact information is on the fact sheet and on the comment form back, back there. Question, this is important, please, get this. Questions asked as part of your testimony will not be answered during the formal hearing. Testimony is a formal verbal submission and not an opportunity for dialogue. And we cannot enter into any discussions, so anyone making formal comments may include questions for the record. Then just continue with comments. Stick around afterward with staff, or perhaps we'll finish early and have more time for questions and answers. And a final rule is about length of comments. So, I'm pretty sure we've got less than eight. So, I'd like to start with five minutes of comments, and I will give you time cues. When you get down to two minutes, one minute, time's up. So, those that indicated with a check mark on the participant list at the sign-in table by the door, and have indicated they want to make, make comments, and when we're, when those have completed, anyone else that has decided they would like to do that will have an opportunity then. So, I think then, so y'all took the time in trouble to come tonight and probably want to leave at a reasonable hour or two. So, to make sure that you and your neighbors get to comment during the time scheduled for this community meeting, I'd like everyone to limit their comment to five minutes. If that is not enough time for you, we have the room until late tonight. Ecology staff are willing to stay around along with anyone else who wishes to continue. I hope that seems to make sense. Okay, so we'll limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. I have little cue cards. I'll give you those. And the first person who signed up to speak is Bert Webb. Please state your name and any affiliations, if you will, for the record.
My name is Bert Webb. I have a blog on matters involving radiation, radioactivity, nuclear power, and so on. I've been blogging for about the last year. And I've studied a lot of information about radiation and the handling of radioactive materials worldwide down to local levels. And I could tell you horror stories of the betrayal of the public trust by government bodies from international groups all the way down to city and state officials. I don't generally trust the government and the government agencies to be completely transparent about what they're doing. When we came to this meeting last time, a lot of these same questions came up, and we got a lot of the same answers. And one of the answers we seem to keep getting is everything's fine, don't worry about it, everything's under control, there really isn't a problem, but we're going to clean it up really fast anyway. And I have a serious, serious problem with the way the Navy is behaving. If they go ahead with the work that they were talking about doing while we're off here babbling away at this meeting, then they don't really care what we do, or what we say, or what we think. They're going to do what they think is best. They're going to proceed with their good plan. And basically, we're just at this meeting to make ourselves feel better. So, that's basically what I have to say. I don't trust the government. And with respect to the transportation of radioactive materials, the Department of Energy was recently busted in Richland for moving radioactive waste through the city of Richland with parade permits, which have the absolute minimum protection for the public. And also of delivering waste to contractors near Hanford that was improperly packaged and emitting radiation when it should not have been, when it should have been completely contained. So, I'm sorry. The reassurances don't really help much. Action counts louder than words. If the Navy gives a damn, the Department of Ecology and Health are serious about this, they will wait for a public process to take place before they take action. If they go ahead and start taking action, now they don't care what we think.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Thank you, Mr. Webb. Next speaker will be Rebecca M. Campbell, followed by John, I'm not sure, is it Kramer?
I wish to second some of what Mr. Webb said. I wonder, when the Navy claims that it is going to have a quick and expedited cleanup, why it took 70 years for the Navy to do this, when this has existed for 70 years. I wonder why the, why there is a pattern of basically lying to the public by the Department of Health, which, when it is not persecuting alternative health practitioners, is favoring and colluding with the pharmaceutical, global pharmaceutical cartel to get legislation passed favoring it. The Department of, of Parks and Recreation is part of the city of Seattle, which is not informing people about the broad surveillance programs in collusion with the Department of Homeland Security, the drones, the intel lights, all these, the cameras, all these things we're not being told about. And then, we have the United States Navy, which is doing military weapons testing, taking out, and they frankly state this, 11,000 marine mammals, and bio-weaponized testing on human beings with us as targets, which we're not being told about, and building a $1 billion dock for non-operative nuclear weapons at $1 billion worth of expense during a time of great financial turmoil within the United States. So, I don't think there's a really good track record of integrity on the part of these private for-profit corporations masquerading as government. And I wonder why the people continue to tolerate this and not see the patterns of lies on which America, at this point, is based. And there needs to be something done about it. It's not just in this park. It needs to be throughout this entire country. And the people need to realize that they do have the power, that they, that these government agencies are all private contractors of the global, of the global banking cartel, and that movements have to be made and realizations made based on this fact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. John Kramer, followed by Mike. I'm not certain if it's Mick Carmody.
I'm John Kramer. I'm a local resident. I've been coming to the Sandpoint area since I was about 12 years old or so. So, my concern about this activity here, it seems to me that the biggest danger we could expect in terms of getting some contamination or some, some damage to somebody due to this radium contamination, is probably going to be during the, the process of removal and the excavation of the areas which contain it. Because you can expect some construction machinery and workers digging up soil and demolishing buildings. And then, if there's any radium in the, those areas, it's liable to go into the wind, and people are playing on the athletic fields out around here. Or if they spray that dust down with water to, to keep the dust down, then, then that's going to go into the lake where people are swimming. So, I'm just wondering, what is the Navy, what is the Navy planning on doing to prevent that kind of thing from happening? Are they going to put up some tents over the work areas to prevent the radium dust from going into the wind where, and getting onto, I don't know, there's like a community garden around here, and there's some, a lot of kids playing, and there's a climbing wall right in, within a couple, a few hundred yards or closer than that to where the activity's going to be going on. So, that's just my concern during the process here. Because it seems to me the most, most dangerous part about this radium would be if you actually were to ingest or inhale it, as somebody might, as it may happen if it were to get into the air, and then the wind would blow down towards the places in the park where people are having some activities. There's outdoor movies and so forth. So, that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Next commenter is Mike. Is it Mick Carmody?
Yes, McCormick.
McCormick, and followed by Rick Ellison.
I did not picture this being this formal. My name is Mike McCormick, and, and I have a, my curiosity about and concern is actually not so much with the, the primary item that they've been painting on the dials. The name of that eludes me at the moment. Radium, thank you, sir. It's with the cesium and the strontium that we're discovering. And because those are elements that, although the radium is probably no longer a threat to us, the cesium and strontium still remains a threat to us. And, and the Navy has, at least to my reading so far, has only given us question marks as to where it has come from. I have a theory as to where that has come from. And I would like the, our elected representatives and the Navy's help in disproving or approving my theory. According to my readings, cesium and strontium are, are byproducts of two major events, that being a nuclear mishap at a nuclear facility, and the other one being from nuclear testing. The Navy participated in the years, beginning in 1946, in significant testing at the Pacific Proving Grounds, where they basically blew the, blew up the Marshall Islands. They also had numerous naval ships there that were exposed to these materials. There are also numerous planes that were exposed to these materials. The planes were flown through the clouds. They were also flown on missions around the, the events. Further from my readings, I understand that one of the missions at Sandpoint Naval Station was to maintain and repair aircraft. So, my question is, and they did so up until, again, from my readings, until about 1953. So, that would have been at least four nuclear tests. And when I say nuclear tests, there's multiple explosions in a given nuclear test at the Pacific Proving Grounds when this occurs. So, my question is, is were any of the planes that participated in those tests sent, or their parts, sent to this facility here and received maintenance? And were the people, and if so, were the people here informed of that? Because if you look at the declassified nuclear test films, which you can find on the internet currently, you can see the, the level of concern and/or knowledge that the Navy presented to the public of the dangerous effects of nuclear weapons at that time, of the radiological effects of nuclear weapons at that time, were pretty horrifying. As an example, with an Army film, again, the Navy is different than the Army, as an example of an Army film, when troops were marched through clouds after at the Nevada test sites, their decontamination process was literally to take a broom and brush them off afterwards. The Navy, if you again look at, look at the evidence online, decontamination of ships was often spraying them with saltwater. You can find tests where they were working on new methods to decontaminate the ships by spraying them down with, in addition to saltwater, and trying to scrub them down with soap, to spraying them with coffee grounds, spraying them with corn cobs, pretty much anything that they had in large bulk quantities at their facilities. So, again, I really would love the Navy's help in, I'm willing to bet you money right now that those records no longer exist. But I'd like to know if the, any of those planes that were used in those tests were transferred to the facility here. So, that's my question.
Next commenter, Rick Ellison, followed by Laye Stephens. Then I have John Rogers, Nicholas Thomas, and Representative Politt. Yeah, all right.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Richard Ellison. I think that the comment period should include all the question period. I think the questioning period is a very informative time, where people get a chance to exchange information and ask questions of the experts. And I think all that should be part of the public testimony. I don't see why it should be separated from it. The federal government is asking us and saying, you know, they won't tell us what's there. I just looked in the documents trying to find out what those water samples were. And I found some radiation samples for the radium 226, but there was no information on any of the alpha meters, the strontium or the cesium. I couldn't find any data. I went, found lots and lots of radium charts. Maybe I missed them. Maybe they're there. But I didn't find any. And I found one soil sample that had 1,190 picocuries per, per G as a soil sample. And so, that seemed kind of high. And so, is that indicative of anything that's out there that they're not telling us about? So, what is it that's been stored there? Is it old weapons that leaked? I mean, what was there? Having the monthly monitoring of the groundwater and surface waters, I feel is very important and should be mentioned and included. Lake Washington has a very large growing population. And as the population increases, the risk to those people increases because there's more people on the site. If there's a best available practice the state is doing that's better standard than the Navy standard, then by, of course, you need to follow the most stringent standard you can find. You'd be doing the, whatever the state-of-the-art cleanup can be, because this is, this is our Seattle, you know, they're selling it downtown. Everyone comes to Lake Washington. Sure, you know, there's a little algae in there that bites you. But if this is going to be a permanent nuclear source, a leak over a long period of time, then the first time we do it, we want to do it right, and we want to do it the best way we can. And if the state regulations are better than the If the state regulations are better than the federal regulations, then the state should be followed. You know, whether it goes forward with all the comment periods we want or not, it should be at the state standard, and the state should be involved with it at that level. I believe that this, all these video recordings should be made available to the general public and be found online easily. Where do the old storm drains go? If you're testing the water just outside the lake here, have you dug into the sediments and said, "Oh, it's hard, we can't get any samples," then obviously you have to drill the samples. And a reading, and I read, said, "Oh, there's big cobbles, we can't use regular drills, we're going to need to do a hand auger." Well, what if the hand auger doesn't work? So I think whatever it is, the Navy is, I'm sure, very capable, they're great, they've been great neighbors, and we want to keep working with them as our neighbors. But at the same time, they need to meet the best standard possible for cleanup at this site, and nothing else is tolerated, and we need to see all the data. And know what's there, and no one's being told what's there, and I think that's wrong. I think it's improper that the city of Seattle and the federal government and whatever agencies did not let the public know that there was in fact radiation discovered here three years ago, come on, the Seattle Times desk were for good headlines, that should have been a front page thing, right? You know, whenever it was found. And it's three years later, and they're saying it's not a big thing to clean this up. Well, they're spending a lot of money on this meeting, I think it is a big thing to clean it up. It's going to cost a lot of money, I don't know where all the waste is going to go. Yeah, we want to trust you, no, we can't trust our government. It needs to be at a scientific level, open to the public, and at the highest standard possible. Thank you.
Then John Rogers.
Hello, my name's Lee Stevens. I've been a resident in Wedgewood since 1976. I was the original vice president of the Wedgewood Community Council in 1986, and I'm a past president of that same organization. Tonight, I'm speaking here as an individual, not representing that organization. We've been told by some experts and some state representatives that there are locations on this site that had high levels of, or I should say this differently, that had measurable levels of low-level radiation here on the site. There were conflicting statements by a representative of the Department of Health, I believe, that flybys by helicopter showed practically no radiation levels on this site. He then proceeded to demonstrate to us that if you hold the Geiger counter someplace where there isn't radioactive material, that you get low readings, and if you put it close to someplace that has radioactive materials, you get high readings. It seems obvious to me that that person needs to understand the lunacy of the statements that they've made. I asked whether he had made measurements where the contamination was high, and he didn't seem to me to answer my question. He said he didn't go into the building, but he obviously couldn't have done measurements close to the radioactive material in the soil either, because some extremely high numbers were presented by two other people on this panel at certain locations in the soil. I also wish to express my lack of confidence that this seven-decade-old problem needs to be addressed right the first time, because when they haul away a bunch of dirt that is containing contaminants, they need to ensure that they've taken all the contaminants down to a level where the measurement of radioactiveness of the remaining soil is at the background level. And it's not clear to me that that's the standard that the Navy intends to work to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. John Rogers, followed by Nicholas Thomas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and allowing me a chance to speak. I must say that my overall feeling about this issue is one of rather profound distrust and cynicism. I really do not have much faith in the Navy. I don't have much faith in the city of Seattle, in the state of Washington and its Department of Ecology. Frankly, none of these people give me much of a feeling of reassurance. Now, when I was in the Coast Guard as a gate guard, more or less guarding and supervising our front gate at our air station, we had Navy officers who would park on our base, and then they would be picked up by a Navy ship and taken out, well, actually a Navy boat, and then taken out to one of their ships. Well, these gentlemen would come in sometimes quite three sheets to the wind, after they had been enjoying the delights and the refreshments of the city. One car, I remember, came into the base, and I went out and saluted, and they saluted back in a rather blurry-eyed style, and then they zoomed off and headed rather disconcertingly towards our hangar and crashed into the front door of the hangar. This was one of my experiences with the wonderful Navy. Now, the city of Seattle is also quite interested in smart meters. The state of Washington doesn't seem to have an awful lot of care about the hazards of these things. It seems like pushing through the agendas and getting the paychecks and making it all look good seems to be the important thing. Well, I don't buy it. I don't buy it at all, and I'm glad you don't either. I think we need to keep a very vigilant eye out for these people, because if we don't watch them, they're not going to do their job. And I think we're starting to see that. Thanks again.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Next commenter, Nicholas Thomas, and that'll be followed by Richard, last name, please.
Honor.
Honor.
Hi, good evening. Hadn't really planned on speaking this evening, but I'll be brief. Oh, sorry. Nicholas Thomas, Seattle resident. Is there any other information you need for the record? What I heard this evening was what I perceived to be a fair amount of minimization of the issues here from just about everybody other than Mr. Paulette. I question the framing of some of the numbers that were presented. Ultimately, what I heard this evening was, you know, more or less a sell job, that what's going on here is really no big deal. And, you know, I don't know if that is or is not the case, but I just want to make a couple of points from that. The first being is that you can convey just about any point you want to, if you selectively choose the information you present. And I saw a lot of that this evening, too. A lot of selectively presenting certain information that really drove home the point that certain folks wanted to drive home. And the one thing I'm having a really tough time reconciling, you know, those figures, those numbers, that information with, is the woman from the Navy, I can't recall her, what was her name?
Cindy O'Hara.
Ms. O'Hara. Her and Mr. Paulette got into an exchange where she was emphasizing why it was critical for some reason that things proceed so quickly without, you know, closely adhering to the process, and, you know, specifically the process for public comment. And her response to that was, it's essential to move things forward very, very quickly here. And the question I'm left with is, if what's going on here is really no big deal, why the urgency? Why not wait and do it right? That's pretty much it. So, thank you for your time.
So then, Richard Honor, and then we'll have Jerry Paulette.
Thank you, Richard Honor, H-O-N-O-U-R, from Kenmore. This is a very interesting evening, it's very highly targeted toward issues of radiation contamination for good cause, that's why we're here. But as a biologist who worked in pediatric oncology for a dozen years, and infectious diseases for many other years, and environmental science for way too many years, I can tell you, there's more to the story. What we have to, what we should be worried about also, is the long-term cumulative effects of low levels of multiple kinds of contamination. Cancer, for example, is not caused by radiation alone, or by chemicals alone, or by infectious agents alone. The two-hit hypothesis tells us that in order to start a tumor, you really have to have more than one biological event. In this case, tonight, where we're discussing radiation, my comments are going to focus on a request to the Navy and to the State Department of Ecology. I would like to see at least a very thorough literature review and summarization of what we know about the synergistic or cumulative or exponential effects of multiple carcinogens, something in addition to radiation. For example, some of us in this room are also working on a dioxin contamination problem along the shores of this same lake in Kenmore, very close to here. The water flows from there to here every day. All around this lake, where we see wonderful homes and properties right now, historically were many industrial sites that produced all kinds of toxic chemicals, whether they were toxic heavy metals, pesticides, pharmaceuticals, paint, creosoting plants from the lumber industry, anything you can think of. But yet, we're only addressing the issue of the numbers that show how many cancers, or what is the risk or threat of cancer from radiation. We should at least have a report for public scrutiny by the State Department of Ecology and by the Navy that explores the concept of multiple synergistic cumulative carcinogens, and then relook at what is the risk. I believe the risk from what are called low-level radiation contamination events is much greater than we can even imagine. The biology isn't there, the medicine isn't there, but we should at least be exposed to the state's and the Fed's best efforts at summarizing that situation for us. Thank you.
Would you ask if other people want to testify first?
I would. I had a Ms. Morris that was uncertain. Are you here? No.
She's multiple chemically sensitive and may have had one.
Is there anyone else that would like to make, yes, please come up.
My name is Elizabeth Mooney, and I live in Kenmore. I'm one of the folks that Dr. Honor was talking about that's concerned about the dioxins, asphalt fumes that are up in Kenmore on the shoreline. I appreciate hearing about the concerns about synergistic effects of multiple pollutants. I also want to thank Representative Paulette and Heart of America Northwest, because if it weren't for them, I wouldn't be here. I used to work on the site at Hangar 32, and this is relevant, because I think that the basic point is that we cannot depend upon this site to be taking care of us, nor the Navy taking care of us, and it requires this public process and the individuals that have come together to make this take longer and take more care and do it right, so that the perception from the public isn't one of fear, and we really don't need to trust just the Navy, we'll be able to trust that the process was done right. So I'm fully in support of doing the testing this summer, and then, as recommended, take those results, communicate with the public, have these great public comment times, and then come back next summer and do it in a more slowly, carefully, instead of stirring everything up and who knows what got exposed, or who got exposed method. But I, just as an example, I used to work at Hangar 32 in the marine mammal lab, and as far as I know, it doesn't have radioactivity. But let's face it, it was Navy base, and when I worked there, I knew I was at risk, because I was in a hangar that was not intended to protect us at the same levels as we expect to be protected now in offices, or on playgrounds, or on beaches. I was fortunate, though, again, to have a boss, Dr. William Bruce McAllister, he's 82 right now, he's helping us in Kenmore. And he knew that asbestos was in the walls of the hangar. He placed me, as a naive student, in an office where he felt that I was not going to be exposed to asbestos and other environmental pollutants. So to the best of his ability, he made me aware of the potential dangers in environmental pollutants, and it has affected my adult life. I'm actually running for Kenmore Council primarily because of asphalt fumes that are harming some of the folks that were here and left, and it's just sad. So I'm here thanks to the hard, good work of Representative Jerry Paulette, because he, like my boss Bruce McAllister, care that we are not unnecessarily exposed to cancer-causing substances. What I learned is that the Navy wasn't worrying about my health, exposure to asbestos in 1980, and I don't think the Navy is in a position to take care of us now. Representative Paulette has encouraged adopting a reasonable process to test before you churn it all up, analyze the results of the sampling, and come back next summer and do a neat job after testing, sharing the information with the public. Some people, some that left earlier who I talked to, they're not going to worry, they're going to trust the Navy. But a few key leaders, like Bruce McAllister, Representative Paulette, Richard Honor, Mimi Bolander, my friend who's out there, know that it's best to protect ahead of time and not stir up potential contaminants possibly spreading radioactivity unsuspecting people who are walking along the streets. We've already waited three years, as I understand it, I don't know everything, but why not wait one more year and share the information? Meanwhile, the perception will be one of trust rather than fear, and there's no reason to rush the job to get rid of the problem quickly. What What harm could come from testing this summer, sharing the results, and coming back next summer? Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kevin Carlson, and I'm a resident of Seattle. And I'd like to urge the State Department of Health and the State Department of Ecology to insist that the Navy conduct the cleanup according to the more stringent state cleanup standards. And I'd also like to argue that the cleanup should be conducted, as everybody's been saying tonight, according to the best available information. So, this means testing the full extent of the contamination, and that includes the drainage system, the lake sediments, and the groundwater. Yeah, yeah, I would. And I'd also like to point out that most of the presentations tonight concern radium and radon gas. But as someone else pointed out, we've got cesium and strontium that was found, and that needs to be investigated. And finally, I'd like to ask for an EIS, as required by state law, so that alternative cleanup plans can be assessed and evaluated by the public. Can we really trust the folks tonight who said there's nothing to worry about when the actual contamination was kept secret for three years? Thanks.
Was that Kevin Carlson? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
I'm Denny Luna, and I am just a private citizen living in North Seattle. Sure. Okay. Yeah, I'm Denny Luna. I'm a private citizen in North Seattle. And I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I did want to say a few things. I actually just heard about the hearing today, and I think that there is a general lack of awareness that there really isn't an outreach plan outside of what, a display ad in the Seattle Times. So, I did, you know, as much study as I could today, read through the 500-page final report. I'm a little confused as to why we're having a public hearing tonight, saying that we're commenting on a work plan that is final. And in general, that's really just the tip of the iceberg for a lot of questions that I have. I do, like the speakers before me, concur that there should not be a rush. I do wonder what is the rush because the material that is in that soil is going to be there for another 300 years and stable there. I wonder who is in charge, who, where the oversight is. I'm hearing that there are state standards that are more stringent than this plan operates on, and yet I'm seeing where there are mechanisms to report to a public official that is supposedly representing both the state and this federal agency. I'm also seeing in a separate document where it's pretty loose-leaf as to the reporting requirements for the officer who's going to carry this out. His performance objective is to obtain final approval from the Navy, City of Seattle Parks and Rec, and other regulatory agencies, and that's about as specific as it gets. I think there's a lack of specificity and kind of a loose-leaf approach. Now, maybe they think that there really isn't a problem, but I was a little alarmed at the lack of awareness, not only in the general public, but from people that ought to be in oversight positions. I found online the report to the Seattle Parks Board, which was in April, and it was, looks like it was the first time that the board had been apprised of this particular situation. And I was pretty surprised when I read this little paragraph, and it really minimized it. It said that this was in reference to the news story last week. So, in other words, they waited for the news to break it, and they minimized what level this contamination was, gave no specifics. And at the end, there was just this little paragraph, it said, "The speculation is that the custodian cleaned the paint, mopped the floors, spread it around, then dumped their mop bucket outside." Without adequate details, I can't really blame the board for not being more up in arms about this, but I think that that's really a gross lack of communication. We've been given very little specifics in that 500-page report as to the actual numbers, the actual data of any testing that's been there. The raw data wasn't there. So, without that, it's impossible to determine what the problem is because in one part of the report, it says that there hasn't been an exceeding of levels, and another part, it definitely says where those levels have been exceeded. I don't know if that's an amalgam, an average. I don't know where, what specific levels there are in which particular spots, as probably a lot of people don't because a lot of it's still unexplored. But I don't know that any studies have been done as to the actual proximity of people that are near those particular spots, how long that exposure has to be before it exceeds what is the tolerable rate. And I also have questions about the federal rate and the level of what's considered safe because that has been really watered down, maybe hundreds, maybe thousands, you know, depending on who you talk to. So, I would like to know the history and which standards we're adhering to. Is it the standards in place today, which are considerably weaker and of some controversy? And finally, I think that this plan is really not very ingenious, especially in a progressive city like Seattle. It has these trucks coming in and the soils handed over in these trucks, and it doesn't really take into any consideration the inert possibilities for some really innovative technology, like using microbes that can act on the cesium, using plants. I think that some of these possibilities, especially for the soil that's here, you might want to consider those methods as well and not just some technology that seems pretty outdated, with all respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna. Anyone else who has determined they would like to make a public comment for the record tonight? And that brings up Mr. Paulette.
Thank you all for staying to the end. For the record, Jerry, with a J, Jerry Paulette, speaking for Heart of America Northwest, citizens group working on cleanup of toxic sites around the region. And I hope this evening that because of the change of format and the presentations, we were going to have many more answers and have the agencies accountable for those answers. And to a significant degree, the format worked far better than an ad hoc gathering in the back of the room when the Navy held just an open house in May. And I really want to appreciate the agencies coming together and Department of Ecology's leadership in making this happen. But what we didn't hear tonight are presentations that you're used to seeing, I'm used to seeing at any contaminated site cleanup, which is for the agency to present the data on what are the contamination levels, where they are, and the methodologies for cleanup. And I don't mean a slide saying, "Here's a picture of a pipe," and calling it a presentation. So, I am deeply disappointed in the agency's presentation tonight. It did not meet standard of what one would expect for public information so that you could give informed comment. But what we did here tonight is the opportunity to have someone on the record, at least in front of a public audience, agencies answering questions. And although it's not in the work plan, I heard tonight that there will be a groundwater and Lake Washington investigation. That's great. It's not in the work plan. Now, I'd like to see a work plan that has the details of that for us to comment on. We're entitled to that. If you're investigating groundwater contamination, we expect to see a sampling plan so that we know that you're sampling the correct locations. If you're following CERCLA, the federal superfund law, it says that your sampling and analysis plan has to be reviewed by EPA. We've asked for that review, and not having seen it, I'm going to assume that you didn't do it. Therefore, let's take a step back. Let's have a proper sampling and analysis plan for the soils, for the groundwater, for the drain lines, and make sure that we do it right and that we get to review it. I was deeply disturbed tonight to hear that the Navy intends to start acting before we've even closed the comment period. I thought you folks said that you wanted to turn the corner and show that you were open and meeting public concerns. You don't do that by acting before you've even received public comments, much less responding to them. So, tonight, you've heard several people ask for sampling plans, and I, Heart of America Northwest, joins that. The Navy proposes to cut off its sampling and its cleanup action at its cleanup action level, which is 15-milligram of dose based on soil concentration for radium, strontium, and cesium. Now, we believe that's the wrong standard. If you don't get a chance to comment and review it, the proposal means that the Navy will stop, and all those promises about we will chase contamination are utterly ridiculous and meaningless because there is no plan for us to review about what the sampling will be, and the work plan says today that we're going to stop at 15-milligram on the soil guide. That's inadequate. We heard tonight, yes, we're going to follow Matka, the state law. No, we're not going to follow Matka. We're following CERCLA. But CERCLA has no off-ramp, that's a quote from the presentation, "to avoid doing the full process." I agree, it doesn't. But you have not done an engineering evaluation and cost analysis, which compares the alternatives and their impacts, and it is the only reason why, if you're under the federal law, you don't have to do an environmental impact statement. But you're not under the federal law. You're under the state law. You're the Navy, but you still have to clean up under state law here. And state law requires the analysis of impacts to be presented with the cleanup plan for the public to review, and we'd like to see it, and we'd like to see it before you act. So, I urge you to stop calling this a time-critical removal action, do a proper investigation, and allow us to see the sampling plans. Allow us to review what happens in the event that the air monitors go off and make sure that they're in the appropriate places, and then come back and do the cleanup correctly once and for all. Thank you all very much for staying the night. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Paulette. Now, we were at the time we had indicated on the agenda we would close the meeting, but we don't have to do that. And before we started the public comment period, we indicated that we would pause the question-and-answer period so that those who had expected to be able to make their comments, starting at 8 o'clock, would be able to do so. We started a bit late, as it was. So, at this point, I'd like to offer the continuation of the question-and-answer period. And if you... Just a moment, sir. Please, just a moment. Do we still have any of our panelists still available?
No, we don't.
Okay, well, we can, we'll do the best we can with what we've got, I suppose, in this case. We'll make an effort to take more questions and respond as best we can. So, if that sounds good to everyone, we'll proceed with questions until it seems that we've kind of begun to spin our wheels a little bit.
I think I have a couple of questions, and one is, I didn't hear anything at all, I'd just like to raise this issue, I didn't hear anything at all about plants or animals, for instance, rodents, insects, birds, et cetera, or plants growing in and then scattering leaves or pollen on the contaminated area, or rodents and animals running around inside of those particular rooms. I didn't hear anything about that, just to comment, something that maybe should be looked into. The second thing I had a question about was the South Shed. We were told that, at the end of the day, the nub of the hurry or the rush was that the South Shed was falling apart and might not be safe to work in. That's why you had to be on a fast track and couldn't spend all the time on the usual process. So, I found it interesting when they put up the list of the order in which activity was going to take place. This South Shed that was falling apart and was very critical was several stages down the list of action that they were going to take. One would think that the South Shed should be at the top of the list. That's another question. Third question is, why was, why were those rooms so badly guarded? Here's another one of the, "It's a rush because people are breaking into those rooms and stealing copper, and we really have to get this thing cleaned up so they won't be doing that anymore." And I know for a fact, I do equipment, IT work and so on, and motion sensors and web-based cameras that are battery-powered and could be sent to the guard shack could be easily placed in those rooms so that not even a rat could get in or out without somebody being alerted. And for God's sake, a rent-a-cop at minimum wage is certainly, would certainly be warranted if what's in those rooms is so damn dangerous. But apparently, this, on this base, the two most dangerous areas could not be guarded or protected sufficiently. So, again, I'm trying to understand why it's such a rush if it would be easy to guard those things. And if the South Shed is such a problem, deal with it, leave the rest until we've really run the process, or put a big tent around it and leave it until we've run the whole process. So, I don't know if anybody has any answers to those. And I think the last one that I had was, yeah, I think one thing that came out of this, and you are the Department of Ecology, my big concern was the question of who really is in charge? Because the first thing I heard last time we met was, "The State Department of Ecology is in charge of this, and we have the final say." Although you couldn't answer the question I had of whether or not you could stop the Navy, if you wanted to, from proceeding with its current plan at that time. But then I heard tonight that actually, the Navy could proceed any way it wants to under SERLA because the Navy is a federal department, did the contamination, even though this is not a superfund site or owned by the federal government anymore. And then, the lady from the Department of Health said that we are legally responsible for radiation that threatens the health of the citizens of this state. So, that's three, two state agencies and the Navy, that it appears to me, it's really unclear of who ultimately is in charge and has the ultimate say at a legal level.
I think four, at least four questions out of the deal there. And will there be anyone else that thinks that there will be so many questions? Just want to get a sense, okay? Possibly here.
I'm just going to re-ask the board once.
Okay, well, let's give Ching P. a chance to say whatever he may have to contribute to that.
I wish I could give you a simple answer. So, I'll give you a characterization. We're like co-pilots, state and the Feds. I know it's not satisfactory. I know it's not satisfactory, but realistically, the two, there are two sets of laws that are in operation here. The federal laws and the state laws. And I have to rely on the advice of the state Assistant Attorney General's office to advise me on where the state has a role with respect to the federal cleanup and vice versa. And that's the best answer I can give you at this time.
Nick has a follow-up.
I guess let's just have a quick dialogue on that. So is the Department of Ecology in a position to dictate whether or not the Navy can go forward with their cleanup plans as?
Everyone here has a question?
No.
The question was, is the Department of Ecology in a position to dictate to the Navy whether or not the Navy can proceed with its cleanup plans as they currently exist?
I don't think so. You know, dictate is a difficult word. There are different degrees of oversight. And dictate implies that we have--
Can you prevent them from moving forward with those plans if you disagree with those plans? I don't want to get into a semantic discussion.
Yeah, you know, I want to have to be real honest here. I can't give you that answer because I don't know it. And that is a legal question. And, you know, and I would just be remiss if I tried to answer that.
Would you please ask someone on authority above you to ask?
You know, let me say, and let me wear my state representative hat on this. It is unacceptable for the state of Washington to not assert that it has authority over a cleanup in the state of Washington when it is not a federal site any longer and is not on the federal superfund list. And I believe that it is incumbent on the state to take a very strong position and say, "You don't get to waltz back in here 15, 20 years later and say, 'Our federal law trumps you any longer.'" There is nothing in the federal superfund law at all. Not a single word that says CERCLA applies and preempts the state law when it is no longer a federal facility. And indeed, when the Navy, the one letter the Navy sent to the state acknowledged at the beginning of the process in '09, that Matka applies. And I think that we need to make sure and take a very strong stand that our state law is going to govern and that Ecology will be able to say, "You've met our state standard. You haven't met our state standard. You're meeting our state process requirements, or you haven't, and give the green light or red light."
We will have an opportunity on Monday at the invitation of Representative Palet to share opinions among the attorneys for the city, for the Navy, and for the state. And we'll have that discussion about who has control, who can make decisions.
All right, we're going to, if there's one more question?
Yeah, all I was going to finish with is, yeah, if there hasn't been an Attorney General opinion on this issue, it is, it's a very important issue. And I don't want to get into attorney-client privilege on this. But if there hasn't been an opinion on this from the Ecology Division, at the AG's office, they should be looking into this. I mean, they just should be.
The AG's office has been looking at this and will be having a discussion on Monday with all the attorneys of all the parties.
Have you ever heard about that?
I have a question here. Yeah, you want to answer that one?
Well, it's Representative Palet's meeting that we're all participating in. Let's figure out how best we can communicate that afterwards.
So I've, as one of the several, as one of several topics, I asked the agencies to get together and to include in the discussion on Monday with their attorneys and, you know, who is in charge and what their relative views are. And I've done a fair amount of legal research on this question. And I'm pretty sure that the Navy is not going to be able to hold its, have its way.
All right, any questions here?
Thanks, and I thank the panelists and everyone who's worked on this tonight and who's spoken. My name's Daniel Griesbach. I'm a Seattle citizen. And I use the park in numerous ways, the community garden and dog park, everywhere around it. So my question was just about Building 27 and just the current, ongoing use of it. And forgive me if it's been made clear, but as I understand through emails I've received and things I've read, it's currently safe for all the hundreds of users, people exercising and children playing soccer there. I guess what my question is, I didn't hear it come up as we talked about soil and water and so many big issues, just the ongoing monitoring of just being in that close proximity using that building as it goes. How's it being checked out as things change, as the site's being worked on? You know, is it getting a monthly check or something like that? Is it ongoing, the process, to match it? How do users get in touch with that information and feel really secure in it?
All that monitoring data is available online. Display copies are in back. Yes, there are dense data tables and they're available if you want to look at them. Tonight, we provided a summary of where the testing for air quality occurred, and they were repeated. We tried to give context of what those air samples meant. We heard the message very loud and clear about concerns for Arena Sports and Magnuson Athletic Club. We expended extraordinary efforts to do multiple samplings, hundreds of sample spots throughout the building and around the building. And they're all safe.
And I don't know if you heard me earlier tonight, but I've looked at the data. I've had several other experts look at the data. I have no qualms about going into Arena Sports, and my son's continuing to play there. So I have no qualms about what's inside uses there. Once you step into the question of soils and parking lots, et cetera, it's a totally different world. And we could go over there at the end of this meeting and I'll show you, there's a groundwater monitoring well from ages ago that is illegally upwelling. And we don't know if that's contaminated groundwater coming up in the parking lot there. And that's one of the reasons why you do sampling plans and you get community input before you proceed. And if you haven't seen that, Ching P., I'll take you over.
All right, was there another question? I'd just like to say, again, I'm not with the program that has responsibility in this area, but just having been at the meeting and hearing your remarks, you know, I know there's a lot of passion and I know there's a lot of concern. And I can only tell you that I believe in the sincerity of certainly the colleagues that I work with at the Department of Ecology to want to be sure that things happen right. So your input is very important. It may seem like it's getting sort of washed aside, but I'm certain that these comments will be looked at carefully and the people in charge will take them seriously. You have advocates working for you, and you should use them. I want to close the meeting if there are no more questions or comments.
Given the concern about the drain pipes and some of the contamination in the drain pipes, I'm just wondering if there are specific areas that aren't going to be examined where there would be chief concerns?
Most certainly, pipes that are upstream, that haven't received any waters historically and presently from Building 27, 2, and 12. You know, there's really no reason to go there.
And I have to tell you, I'm concerned that the Navy made a decision to direct its contractor not to survey, for instance, the hangars used by NOAA. And Elizabeth Mooney spoke earlier about being in one of those. The property line, so to speak, is a really artificial line here. And there's reason to believe from historical documents that there was radium work in at least one of the NOAA hangars. And is, you know, one of the things that we'll be raising in our formal comments. And if you start the work before you do it, we're going to be blowing our opportunity to make sure that's done. So if there is contamination upstream, so to speak, because there is another facility that utilized radium, and we don't know where the strontium and cesium came from, I'm concerned about the fact that we've not done a proper, thorough review of all potential contaminated areas at this end of the park.
What does that $9 million figure entail? And the reason I'm asking is that the areas, the square footage of the areas that are being examined, they vary pretty widely. So is there any way that you can answer that?
Well, there are extraordinary safety precautions. And then the cost of handling and disposal are just very, very high. So this is not an ordinary, like a gasoline tank cleanup. You know, there are special equipments, like HEPA filters, shrouded equipment, which are tents over the equipment to prevent fugitive dust. The workers have to have special training. There's multiple types of monitoring. It all adds up very quickly.
I'm not criticizing it being too costly. My question is, is that enough money, considering that the range of the square footage in your plan is really varied?
Well, we have to have an estimate at some point, and that is the estimate to do it. The Navy's committed to doing the cleanup per the scope of work. And yes, I understand that there's concerns from the audience about that scope and the timing. But nevertheless, if we talk just about the budget and the commitment of the Navy to execute that scope of work, they will pay for it. If it's more than $9 million, then they will, we will have to pay for it. If it's less than $9 million, of course, it's a savings.
All right, I'm looking for the last question or comment.
I would really like to express my gratitude to the Department of Ecology and the person of you two who have remained with us and the professional attitude you both have shown. I know it's not easy working side by side with an elected official who has huge public backing and perhaps some of your own concepts and ideas are different than his. It's sometimes like working with an elephant beside you. He may not intentionally step on you, but he might do it accidentally. And you've both been very, very professional, and it's appreciated.
You know, that's why we have this great nation. It's a nation ruled by laws.
Mr. Palet? And I have to say, Ching P. is also the manager for, involved and facilitated meetings for Kenmore. And I've admired, and so when he was told me that he was going to be project manager here, I was thrilled because, as you can see, he's someone who cares about getting that public input and is very, very thoughtful about the whole process. And even, I appreciate that he doesn't just answer off the cuff and says, "I don't know," even when I'm sitting here and saying, "Oh, sure, you should do this." But I think it's very important for a state official to be able to take a reasoned view and say, "I don't know." So thanks. Thank you all. Thanks, everyone. Talking about a background level in the 3,000 to 5,000 counts per minute and hotspots at 187,000 counts per minute. And when you do the conversion, you're talking about very significant levels of radiation in the soil. That's why we have to clean it up. The radiation levels in the soil are so significant that what the Navy says is their cutoff, what they will leave behind, is, results in a dose rate based on their expectation of how someone is exposed to it. They're not sitting on it for a year, but their expectation of exposure of 15-milligram a year, that's equivalent to 1 1/2 chest X-rays every year. And that dose for each of their radionuclides, which is a different conversation now whether it's appropriate to add them instead of having one total. That dose alone is significant. We're talking about if you're exposed year after year to it in a public park, which is what we expect, starting from childhood, you're talking about a significant cancer risk level that, based on the most recent National Research Council data, translates to a childhood risk level that could be as high as 1 1/2% additional excess cancers caused from exposure over lifetime. That's high. We think that the Navy's level of 15-milligram per year is too high for a public park for exposure.
Well, I'm curious why the Navy is resistant to following this, the Washington State process of public disclosure and looking at different alternatives other than the one we selected.
I'm trying to think of how to answer that. It's not that we're resistant to following the state regulation. We actually are following the substantive requirements under the Model Toxic Control Act.
I'm just to go with the requirements, had several more steps and processes that the Navy has elected to not follow.
Well, I think there's been some misinformation about that. We are following the CERCLA process where you do a remedial investigation, you do a feasibility study, you do a proposed plan, you do a record of decision, you do design, like this post on the board out there. That's very, very similar to the Model Toxic Control Act. The writers of the Model Toxic Control Act, in my opinion, were very brilliant. They took what, at that time, was CERCLA, and they took the best parts of CERCLA and put it in the Model Toxic Control Act. And they're very, very similar. So when people say, "We're resistant to following the Model Toxic Control Act," I guess I'm not really sure what parts I think we're not following.
In one of the initial introductions, this statement was made that the Navy has not provided a study of the cleanup alternatives, environmental impact statement, engineering evaluation, and cost analysis reviews to disclose the results of the contamination study.
Yeah, I know that was from the first presenter. And certainly, I'm not a lawyer. But for example, an environmental impact statement is, and some sediments. We actually went out to Lake Washington where the outfall is. The outfall is where the water for the storm drains through the pipe go exit into the lake. We sent divers to try to collect sediments out of that outfall during the remedial investigation. It's all in the remedial investigation, but I have to continue that when we sent the divers out there, the material is so big, it's all gravel out there, that we couldn't collect a sample of the sediment. And that's why we know that the next phase, or the next thing we have to look at, is the near-shore area in the lake. I mean, what is going on there? I mean, right now, we're just trying to deal with where we know there was contamination. I mean, right now, we're just trying to deal with where we know there was contamination, where we, we know there's issues, in the most expedient way we can. There's a question, why, why are we going so fast? We, we started to realize that we had to. If we didn't, if we...
What are there, share with us now, what is in the ground that you say, for one, it's a little, these little files are great, but then you're saying, what, you've got this huge meaning going on here, because this is a major radioactive source you're concerned about, so you have a standard, you try to do the best thing you can do, and you show the data of what's going on, and I assume it was all, it's the best that can be communicated, so you don't even know it's there, and, and you won't share with us what we do?
Did you get a question out of that?
I, I think, I want to explain that the way we do the environmental cleanup, I mean, we, we go where we know something is, and then we go out until, we keep sampling out until we don't find it anymore. I mean, that's a pretty typical way that we figure, because it's not possible to just go, "Okay, you know everything." We have to actually go out and sample for it. And we have shared all of that. I mean, it's on, in the remedial investigation, there's a copy here today, all the surveys are online, this, another hard copy of the document with the DVD with all the survey results are in the information repository. We're not trying to hide anything here. There's no reason for us to hide anything. We're just trying to go out and clean it up, and then we'll continue. When we're out there cleaning up, we'll also be taking samples, so we can determine if there's more out there. What are the other things? I mean, one wonderful thing about doing this remedial action, we'll get even more information, so we'll even know if there's more impacts.
This is a huge row in the sea, so...
Okay, so, so we're going to give some other folks a chance to ask their questions, and if I remember correctly, we were going to Representative Palet? Then take care. Or, can I get that reversed?
Keep coming.
All right, gentlemen.
Yeah, my name is Bert Webb, and the question I have is not CIRCLA, and the statement was made earlier that CIRCLA doesn't apply, because it's not a sort of thing outside, it's federal laws of the Navy seems to be on there, and I heard it started to help, called CIRCLA, that would seem to apply. I mean, is that true, or is that not true?
Well, you know...
Does the Navy, and the Navy not do this federal process, even though legally it's not applied?
Before 1986, Department of Defense thought the same way you did. We thought that if it wasn't a national priority listed site, we didn't have to follow CIRCLA, we could follow another process. In 1986, Congress passed something called the Superfund Amendment Authorization Act, and it required Department of Defense to use CIRCLA, the CIRCLA process and the National Contingency Plan for any contamination on...
When you say leftovers, you mean the...
The waste.
The waste?
Et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. The waste is, it might go to a couple facilities, one's in the Tri-Cities area, and the other one maybe in Idaho.
We heard two conflicting statements, one from Jerry that showed a picture where high levels of radiation were detected, and another one from Al...
He's coming.
Who, who said, "I didn't find any radiation," or at least that's essentially how I interpreted what Al said.
I'm sorry, could you start the first part of the question? I didn't quite hear that. Oh, what he was talking, the contamination he was talking about?
Yeah, he, he said, "Here's a picture of these buildings, and here's a whole bunch of dots around the buildings showing places that had, had measurements taken with high levels of radiation."
Right.
We've heard someone from the Navy, I think Chris, telling us that high levels of radiation were found in pipes inside cement, and so they haven't been removed yet, as well as places that had holes in the ground that people climbed into, I guess, to maintain those pipes that had high levels, and some, and others that didn't. Your statement, Al, was, "I took measurements." Is it that you just didn't go to those places, or what can you tell us?
I did not go in the buildings. I was looking at publicly accessible areas. What Representative Palet was referring to was contamination at ground level, which includes all types of contamin, all types of radiation. There's more than just gamma radiation involved when you're looking at contamination. And an instrument like this, or they used a better one than this, but this will detect alpha, beta, and gamma radiation, and that's what you see when you look at counts per minute. I was looking at gamma radiation at waste level for the public, where the public is, has more accessibility. But I will show you something. This, this has got, this is a little radium dial right here, and what, what I want you to notice is this. See, when you're actually looking at the gamma radiation, you don't have to get too far away before you're really not being exposed to it anymore. I hope nobody goes and sits on it like, like he suggests, but that's a totally different, it's like looking at apples and oranges. It's a totally different way to look at all the radioactivity that's in contamination and not just the gamma radiation.
I, I think, I don't know if that's more confusing or less confusing to you. If we showed that slide again, and the pictures are also up on the board from Heart of America Northwest, the, the slide I showed was the Navy's contractors' radiological survey data.
CIRCLA is considered equivalent to that. The law itself, CIRCLA, is considered equivalent to NEPA, which, the National Environmental Protection Act, which requires an environmental impact statement. I don't believe the Model Toxic Control Act requires an environmental impact statement. Ching P.?
It, it sure does. The state rules say that you have to do an environmental impact statement when you release your cleanup plan for the public to review. You've not done an engineering evaluation, cost assessment, or a feasibility study, or if you did, the records show that you abandoned it, you haven't produced it for us to review. And, I think we should be seeing that. I, I have to tell you, from the presentation...
No, before you go on, the question was to me, I'd like to continue to answer that.
Well, let me just say something here, Cindy. I was shocked that you are, the Navy said tonight that it is going to proceed with the work before the comment period even ends. And in terms of process, I guess I'd like to have you explain that one to us. How the heck are we supposed to trust that you're following the process if you're proceeding with the work before the comment period ends?
So, there's a question, you're correct, that you...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm supposed to answer the first question or the second question?
Can you answer your other question?
I'm confused. It doesn't sound to me like that's...
Do you, do you need to repeat your question? For, do you need to repeat your question? Okay, then we, so, Representative Palet, we had a, we spoke out of order, so we're going to go to the gentleman here, and then you'll be next, and we'll go here after that. So, the gentleman in the green shirt there, thank you.
Hello, I'm Mr. Dawson. My first question is, why isn't that the question period is not considered part of the public comment? Public comment period is separate, certainly you say, "Ask questions now," is not considered reviewed as part of the public comment. And I also like to know whether all these recordings are maybe now online, so we can see the whole recording of it and learn the future from it.
Sounds like that question may be for me.
Another question, if you can't answer that question, another question for the panel that is, what water quality testing is going on? There's a lot of information presented about sort of error values of microcuries, microcuries of radiation, but what analysis has been done on soil and water, groundwater, anything that's coming, leaking out of the sediments, off the base, was formerly a base? Everything is so old, so long ago, that whatever's been done there, the technology has to be ancient, right? So, why is the public doesn't know what's there? And, part of that speed is water quality testing, it's a whole lot of, where did the water flow to down this drain 30, 50 years ago, and it comes elsewhere else, is it biodegradable somewhere else? So, what water quality testing do we have going on right now? Where is it available to the public?
So, would you want me to take part of it, or do you want to take...
Sure. Just do me what, just do me what.
What part? Okay. Well, you had a couple questions. We did intent, we did quite a bit of analysis on the soil around the buildings. In fact, part of the removal action is to remove part of those, that soil, and those surveys are available online. We also sampled along the storm drains and catch base federal facilities or from a vessel or a facility. And this is considered contamination from a facility since the contamination was created while the facility was an active naval base.
So what you're saying is that even though this facility is not owned by the federal government, the federal government wants to use CIRCLA to clean it up because it's contaminated by a federal department?
Right, it's our contamination.
So that's, it's legally entitled to the 77th?
That's right, thank you.
And CIRCLA does not require an environmental impact statement?
No, it's considered equivalent to an environmental impact statement.
I'm sorry, I lost track. Those that want to speak, would you please raise your hand again? All right, we're going to go to the gentleman here, the lady there. I saw this gentleman, and I saw a lady there. Was it you, please? I'm, I'm having trouble keeping track of all this, so you got to help me now. All right, so the gentleman.
Hello, thank you, Richard Dummer, living in Kenmore, they're here, my kids, your grandkids all play in here. I'm wondering if there may be some missing pipes, some missing material. I hear about storm drains, I've read about storm drains. We asked about what pipes were following radiation in. We saw pipes that were cut off at the ground, but please recall, Metro and the hooked-in sewer lines are relatively new, considering my age. Long ago, Lake Washington was a sewer. I'm suspicious that in the day, when this contamination was provided, the sewer lines were where a lot of that contamination went. Some were along the line of time. Those sewer lines were damaged. I'm suspicious that they may still be buried under the grounds, and the sludges therein may be highly contaminated after years and years of continuous additive contamination. Do you have ancient records that show early sewage outfalls into the lake?
The radium room pipe that I showed you on the, on the drawing, that was connected to the storm drain line that runs out to Lake Washington, so it wasn't connected to the sewer. And you're right, I think a lot of the lines were, both water and sewer lines went to the lake originally. So, when the, when Metro came in, all those lines were put to the sewer, but the old lines that weren't used anymore weren't connected.
So they're still at the ground?
Well, well, those are the ones that we found that were contaminated.
Are you sure that you know where they're all?
They were still connected. So, you know, the one that went into the, into the floor that I showed you, that's still connected to the storm drain. So they didn't, they didn't disconnect that because they weren't using that pipe anymore, they just left it in the wall.
So they maybe left her in front of Metro?
And they hooked up, there's other new sewer pipes in the building to Metro.
And the remaining old pipes that went in the drainage, which is, you know, are through the lake?
Tell me it's about the videos.
Might still be there.
No, the, the one that went to the lake was the storm drain line.
So at one time, historically, storm drain and sewage were the same?
Yep.
You know that?
Based on what that radium room pipe goes to, yes.
Okay. May I continue with one more? This lady presented a very interesting question about...